Okay, we'll call this Monday, April fourteenth, meeting of Nelsonville City Council. So you take the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Taylor, would you please give the opening prayer?
Dear Lord, please look over everyone in the city, keep them safe from the storms, keep them healthy. We pray for Mr. Flowers who's ill this evening. We pray for our new council members coming on board. Allow us to work together to solve the problems of the city and move us forward. And your hand in the prayer.
Chief Collier, roll please.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Clement.
Here.
Ms. Sonnen.
Here.
Mr. Solomon.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Flowers.
Second.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have two vacant seats on city council. I have made appointments to those seats, and at this time, we will swear those two people in. Should we do them individually? Yeah. So there's, remember the order of the vacancies was the seat previous, well, seat vacated by Mr. Dunphy was vacated first, so that right then would be filled first, and then this seat vacated by Mr. Booth. That vacation was created second, so that, once the first seat is filled, then that seat is filled. Okay, all right, thank you. With that, Ms. Nick Joseph-Sol, would you come forward, please?
I feel that I have a responsibility to remind council that...
You can speak under citizen comments.
To remind council, to let the folks know that you're bringing in that...
Please wait till some of these things. You can speak under citizen.
Why, before, I'm trying to let them know what they're getting into before they get them in there. And then, no, I'm gonna finish, I already started.
No, sorry.
They should be told that if they take the seat, they will be added to the lawsuit. The two seats that are currently available, the two seats that are available...
Ms. Win, you were interrupting the public meeting.
Do not belong to you.
Walk out of the room.
Clement is not the real president.
Okay.
Agent Lawson does not...
You were interrupting a public meeting.
Do not touch me like that.
Ms. Win.
Do not touch me like that.
You've been told you're interrupting a public meeting.
Mr. Lawson is not even on council legally.
Okay.
These people don't have a clue what they're getting into.
Ms. Win.
Furthermore...
You're under arrest for interrupting a public meeting, Ms. Win.
Mr. Clement.
Ms. Win, you are under arrest for interrupting a public meeting.
Oh, for me?
Ms. Win, walk out of the room, please.
The Ohio... Ah, you're hurting me!
Ms. Win, I've informed you, you're under arrest.
Let me go.
You are under arrest.
Why? Because I'm telling the truth? It's the truth.
They called you to order, you ignored it, so you're under arrest, please walk out of the room.
Just to remind the citizens...
Ms. Win.
People with felonies...
I've explained to you, you're under arrest.
Are not allowed to serve on council.
Please walk out of the room.
According to the Ohio revised code. You know, my friend, I am done, can you let me go?
No, you're under arrest.
No.
Ms. Win.
I'm gonna get my stuff, I can't leave my...
I've informed you, you're under arrest.
I can't leave my wallet right there, let me get it.
I will collect it once we exit the room. You're under arrest, Ms. Win.
You don't have to...
I've asked you to walk out on your own, you can do it.
I am doing that.
All right, let's go.
I need to get my wallet.
I will collect it once you've exited the room, let's go.
Tell me.
Ms. Win.
Why can't I just get it, it's right there?
Because I've informed you, you're under arrest, and you're not complying with my orders. So let's walk out of the room. One, two, and three, come on.
I'm walking, David.
No, you're under arrest. I make a motion, we call for a brief recess. Second. Right, roll please.
Ms. Sonnen, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Yes. There's nothing...
Ms. Win, Ms. Win. Okay, I'll make a motion, we return to regular council meeting.
Yeah?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen.
Yes.
Okay, so, to pick up where we were, Ms. Nick Joseph-Sol, you would come forward, and your appointment will be to the seat vacated by Mr. Dunphy.
Understood.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Nick Joseph Sol.
You hereby solemnly swear or affirm...
You hereby solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will...
That I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Laws.
And the Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio.
Of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio.
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of council.
As a member of council.
Of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio.
Of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio.
On the board. Please have a seat up here.
All right.
All right. Next, Mr. Cameron Peck, you will come forward, and you will be filling the seat that was vacated by Mr. Booth. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Cameron Peck. You hereby solemnly swear or affirm... You hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will... That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. The Charter and the Charter and Laws. And the Charter and Laws of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. Faithfully, honestly, and impartially. Faithfully, honestly, and impartially. Discharge the duties... Discharge the duties. Of my office. Of my office. As a member of council. As a member of council. Of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. Of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did everyone receive the minutes from the last meeting on March twenty-fourth? Are there any corrections or additions? I make a motion to accept the minute.
Second.
Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Peck.
Yes.
I don't think you've got confirmation.
All right, I'll say it.
Um, Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen.
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol. I will also abstain.
Okay, citizens' comments. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and if anyone has any comments, please step to the podium.
I'm Mary Moffett, one seventy-six Bridge Street, and I just, I'm asking the council to clarify the issue that's on the ballot, so that I inform exactly what a yes is and what a no implies for the reelection coming up next. About the council's authority during the transition, or is it instead of a transition? And if there's an amendment, so, it's just very confusing to me about seeing all the things about the mayor, and then hearing that issue twenty-three will be null and void if this passes. So, I just wanted to get some clarity on it, okay? I'm not stating an opinion, I'm asking for clarity.
Sure. To answer that, I believe later in the meeting, we are going to discuss the issue four, and we'll try to address as many questions and answers at that time. Any other assistance comments? Okay, business and organizational comments? I believe Mr. Courtney, do you want to give an update on the ad hoc commission?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
President Clement, members of council, good evening, good to see you all. The advisory commission met on, at the end of last Thursday. The majority of our meeting was spent discussing the timeline and possible solutions to what I refer to as the December problem. For anybody who's unaware, that is, majority of current council seats, as well as the auditor and treasurer, those terms expire at the end of December, or end of November, pardon me. And issue twenty-three states that folks are turning the statutory form, their terms not begin until January first. So we had that one month period where Nelsonville City government largely not going to be able to function, because lack the council, lack the folks to appropriateations, lack the folks to sign and send out those checks. So, we see two possible routes to go to solve this. The first, and I just want to be clear before I get into this, we as a commissioner are not making recommendations of this timeline either of these. We believe that the answer to whatever happens with issue four is going to determine the best way forward with that, as well as making those communications out to the general public about what is happening. There's just too many variables out there right now for us to make a hard and fast, this is the way we're going, and making communications to the public around those. So that is clear there. The first option is to make sure the council would pass a resolution directing or requesting the board of elections place on the ballot this November, all of the seats that are left under the charter form of government. Those seats would only be, those terms would only be for one month, because the new, again, issue twenty-three states those new terms take place, or the seats begin at first, that first day of January. So there's going to be one month terms, get folks coming in, you know, straight and simple that way. There's a lot of problems that come around with that, with, you know, the institutional knowledge, that it's an all new council, or we have new folks coming into the auditor or treasurer job, you know, there's big jobs and competitive jobs, and they take a little bit of time for, for sure. It's probably a little bit longer than a month to learn to get to those things. The second option would be amending the charter, which also comes with some headaches and some issues. We would amend charter to essentially extend the terms of folks who are in these seats now, at the end of the year. And whatever we do in that amendment, we'd also want to be very clear that this did not reverse issue twenty-three, the charter still sunsets, you know, at the end of the year. And that would also be an opportunity to clean up any of the other problems that we might face and discover as we're working through this as the advisory commission. So, like I said, we're not endorsing the intervention right now, but that's what was discussed. Secondly, I'm sure you've all seen the election lead when voters, and this room, I assume is probably going to perform counsel of this. We need to check the date here, April twenty-seventh, two P M. at the Ockham College Lodge. There can be an informational meeting about the process, goals, outcomes, timeline, or drawing the word mats, or the new proposed word mats, that is. That was shared in our meeting, and also discussed. We also talked a little bit about how we get the word out to the public about what the transition's going to look like, what the advisory commission is working on, and that was also discussed, maybe, in that town hall setting, also waiting until a little bit later, you know, closer to the middle of the year, when summer comes around. You know, get more clarity on issue four. We'll also get a little bit more, we'll be a little bit closer to, to the sunset date for the charter. We also discussed the possibility of doing Q and A around table type issues with, or round table type meetings with city employees, making sure that they are in the loop about what's going on, as well as any Q and A style meeting where we as a commission could be hearing from, you know, the city's employees and public servants here in Nelsonville about, in terms of they have questions they have, as well as us just learning their jobs and learning, you know, how best to perform city operations, statute, with minimal, minimal...
Okay, are we going to keep from some of those...
Distractions, minimal, trickles.
Does council have any questions from Mr. Courtney?
Mm-hmm. How long does the city have to put, and then the second option that you were describing, because it's a December problem, how long does the city have to put something on the ballot?
I would prefer Mr. Rob on that, he'd know better than I, but I, we don't have a long time. I can say that, and you can tip on that.
It would be early August.
Early August.
Yeah, that would be through November, corralled, because there's still questions whether or not we can put something on it on this. Well, I think we can.
Okay. Um, if something like that were going to be put on the ballot and fail, would it be as if nothing had happened, would there be other effects to the trajectory of things?
I think the best answer would be, we'd just stay on the same trajectory we are at this point in time, nothing, it would be as if nothing had happened.
If I may, we wouldn't want to put all our eggs in that basket, but the problem is, is that two, you know, two, um, solutions we have right now, they'd be conflict if we put them both into place, you know. You know, if we're having both of these questions asked on the November ballot, then, you know, we're going to ask to fill these seats on the ballot, or we're going to ask to pass this charter on the same ballot, right? So I think those two things are likely mutually exclusive, so the commission's going to have to go back to drawing the line contingency once we decide which one of those to go. Well, obviously, the first issue, we would need a contingency because likely we could solve itself in a number of ways, but the second issue, which, again, not endorsing anything, is probably the less fraught path to go down, but still would have some problems, and, you know, if they go into the voters and asking them to pass something, it's mission critical here.
Uh, any other questions from Mr. Courtney?
Could I ask if the advisory commission has any idea on what the budget would look like? If... So far as I understand, from having been present in the last meeting, regarding on, um, a budget proposals for whether issue four passes and whether issue four fails, how it would affect the cost of running the city government, do you have any information about that yet?
So, are you asking about putting another issue on the ballot?
No.
Okay.
No, just helping the people understand what the effects would be if it goes either way.
So, I'm going to push back and kind of say that's not the commission's goal, and that's right. Issue four exists outside of this sphere that I see the advisory commission existing in.
Okay.
Issue twenty-three will operate, and that's, that is our motivating factor, is getting that implemented.
Okay.
That's what we're being charged with, so when we're thinking about what we need to do, we do need to pay attention to what's happening in the world around us, and issue four is one of those things. But until the voters decide the law's changed or not changed, I'm operating off of issue twenty-three. So that's not something that I thought about personally, I mean, I would, I'd ask the commission when we meet next, but I don't have an answer for that in the moment.
Understood. I just have one more, then, kind of a follow-up to that. Do you have any idea what the city's budget would look like under issue twenty-three becoming law?
Well, uh, the statutory form of government, in my, in my assessment of it, and I, this has become my catchphrase in this whole process, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an expert in the law, I, I'm just like everybody else, I can open up the higher vice code and read it, yeah. But my assessment is, is that the statutory form of government is a little bit larger in scope than what we have currently. There's statute, there's more elected offices, you know, I mean, it's not significant, but it is a little larger, and I assume that it's probably going to cost a little bit more under statute, just, there might be other areas you can save some funds, but I think that under statute, the amount of jobs that are required by the law, and the amount of elected offices, it will probably be greater expense to do public. But again, they caught me off not an attorney, I'm not an expert in that.
Understood.
I'm learning this as I go, so.
Thank you.
In part on that, our next council meeting, we will be having the current staffing ordinance coming through for approval, so we can look at what we currently have, and potentially what would be coming under the statutory form. That would give you kind of an idea to your question.
I appreciate that.
Great. Well, our next meeting's going to be April twenty-fourth, six P M., right here in the room, so, up for the questions, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Okay, committees, did any committees meet since the last council meeting?
Yes, Mr. President. We had a street committee meeting. We talked about vacating of alleys, and we have one now that we're currently working on for citizen. We don't have any legislation as of yet, but I see that Mr. Rob has a, an update on vacating alleys in his, his report. But we also discussed having a process for vacating alleys for the future, just so it's a little bit easier and seamless of a process. Mr. Cohen also mentioned that there was some other alleys that the current, that the city currently owns, that he would be proposing to vacate, so if we have the ability to, you know, streamline that process, that would be terrific. And also, I reached out to a surveyor, in case we end up needing one for the vacation of the alley. And we talked, they felt that it could be done with a little bit of a sketch and description. Wouldn't necessarily need a survey, but they said they would reach out to me and let me know. But they could probably, if there is one that's needed, probably could be done in the next couple of weeks. I was hoping to get the legislation part of it done tonight, so council wouldn't have to act. Our part would be done, and then put that into the hands of Mr. Rob and Mr. Coliver. We also had a, that was pretty much it for the street committee. We also had a parks and rec, rec committee, where we had, we discussed the aquatic center. Mr. Cohen sent out a report today, talking about some of the things that we discussed in that meeting. So we talked about having an engineer approve that the pool would be safe to open this year. He also has some quotes to be able to get some, to repair the problems with the current pool, with the leak that we have there. Also discussed, in Parks and Rec, we discussed the donation of the Frank property, which is not on tonight's agenda, also was kind of hoping to have that as well. We talked about that, they, the Frank family is willing to donate some parcels to add to Polyfield, if the city would put some fencing in there, they're having, they continually have problems. The park fills up during ballgames, and they continually, people trespass onto their property, and park on their property, and they're concerned about liability, so they're hoping that they could just donate to the city, the city would fence it off, and then it would, you know, save them a little bit of liability. So we're still working on that, I know Mr. Cohen's also getting quotes on the fencing still. We also had a police and fire meeting. We, it's been brought up several times, I brought it up in a public meeting to discuss a little bit. We still have a K nine officer fund. If the K nine officer is not currently in our staffing ordinance at the moment, but just the goal of having a K nine officer in the city again is, is still the goal, but it's, it's just based on everything we're dealing with this year, and where we're at currently, and it's probably not going to be this year. So that money will probably continue to sit in the K nine fund, but we just wanted people to be aware of it, because it's been brought up multiple times, and I've been told about it as well, so it's, it will remain in there, it won't be spent on anything else, unless the city were to change their mind and decide they weren't going to have a K nine officer in the future, then they would potentially, you know, that money could be moved, but only by council, you know, appropriating that. We do have a need for a civil service exam, we're still one person short on the civil service commission. So we have the need for a civil service exam for our police and fire departments, but we're just, we ask for any volunteers that wanted to participate in the, um, in, in that, the civil service commission, so you can practice some tasks for individuals. So, that was pretty much it, I think, that we discussed on the committee meetings.
Okay.
Hopefully I didn't forget anything.
Any council discussion on those committee meetings?
How far away are we from the dog, from getting the K nine?
It's, it's probably going to be, it probably won't happen this year.
Yeah, so Chief, Chief Oliver can address that.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of turnover in the police department for the last couple of years, which has kind of led us to have an abundance of young officers. So it's just working on getting someone to a good point where they're able to handle the additional responsibilities of the K nine, you've kind of been there.
I got one, I don't know, a K nine officer in my family, I understand, but it's like, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, please expect some surprises.
Yeah, I just know how important it is in our division.
Yeah, and the other thing we talked about was the process of actually getting a K nine officer. So it takes, the timeline is, is several months, from the time you order the dog, to the time the dog is trained, to the time you have the officer, and then you have the officer and the dog go to training. So before it's actually in service, it takes some time, so that's why I said realistically, it's probably what happened this year.
Yes.
Could I ask a question about what exactly vacating alleys means? What if you have a house here, and a house there, and the alley in between, how does that affect those two houses?
So in that case, the alley is split down the middle, half goes to the one house, half goes to the other.
And they have to maintain it?
Well, it, ownership, title and ownership is transferred to the respective property.
Are people still drive, visit, okay, that's good, thank you.
The alley that they're talking about is also known as, it's not a road, it's a section of grass. It was originally mapped out for an alley, never had anything.
Oh, it's not like what would be a road that we consider today?
We have, there's a tree in the alley, it's probably about fifty years old, and it's completely, you would never know that there's an alley there. It's literally grass, yeah. The property owners currently maintain it.
Okay.
Wasn't there a building actually in that alleyway?
Like a shed, it's a little shed, it's also new.
So, has the owner been talked to about what he's going to do? Or, I mean, how are you going to handle that?
If the alley is vacated, it will be, the shed will be now on their property, so. It'll end up in there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Oliver. Department updates.
From the police department, my stats for March were three hundred and forty calls for service, hundred and twenty-seven traffic stops with forty-two citations issued, seven parking citations. We handled eight traffic crashes, made twenty-six criminal arrests, nine warrant arrests. As well, we had everyone at the department go through and get their CPR recertified. As well, we had everyone at the department go through and get their CPR recertified. We've also had Sergeant Durdor began instructional, an instructional skills course, which will allow him to be able to teach continued professional training credit hours for the department. Officer Hong completed an active threat response course. Uh, we also have TASER training scheduled for Tuesday. That's all. Any questions?
Look, they want volunteers for that, don't they?
I have a couple of friends in Ashland that said they were.
Any other questions for Chief Tolliver? Thank you, Chief.
Then I have Jeff Traw here to give a quick update on, not really an update, but to field a couple of questions regarding the city water. Just a way to.
You want to do that now or under your city manager report?
We can just do it now. That way you can.
Yeah, that way. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Traw and I'm the operator record at the water plant. And, uh, we've had issues with total tile methods. Since I've been there, six and a half years. And, uh, we just got there, started working on them. And we're making progress and TTHMs, these total tile methods. What creates that is organic material, chlorine. And it creates what's called disinfectant byproducts. And there's aluminum on that stuff. And we're required to test work. And, uh, when I first got there, I decided to change the oxidizer that we use to oxidize iron manate, to move it from chlorine to potassium permanente. They both do the same job. The potassium per, per manate does not have any chlorine in it, so we cannot produce total tile methods. And we've made some decent progress. Eventually, we had to lower the towers levels down to lower the volume because what creates high TTHMs is chlorine, organic material, time and temperature. So the more water you have in there, the longer it's intact. So that creates more TTHMs. So we lowered its tanks downs, whatever, and we made a more progress. It's all very good. And, uh, our, our biggest issue right now is a site that we have out at the end of Kimberly Road. There's an old posty school used to be right in the area. I've got a little map there if you want to take a look at it. I'm returning. I'm bowing it off, but there's a dead end line that goes from right there to Hocking College. Hocking College is served by eight inch water line. It was clear around the school. It's a location of school also. Right there is a lot of usage, so the water does not get old. The water there is pretty good. Where our sample site is, which we can't change it. We tried and tried. EPA won't let us. Is out at Kimberly Road about a mile and a half. A mile and a quarter, a mile and a half out to the sample site. And it's a dead end line, so that water doesn't circulate. Originally, that water line was a four inch. Curved it down to a three inch, about an eighty-year-old line. And, uh, my ex-boss, Scott Frank, an engineer, decided to change that line from a three inch to a six inch, which, seeing that's water line, it's four times the size of three inches, bottom line. So retention time to get out that water line doubled. It's four days for that water to get off this loop here at the school, where there's a lot of usage to get out that site. And that's where the issue is. There's a, there's another document you should have there. It's got Lehman hanger on it. This is a, a map recorder that I use. If you, if you search that, you can see there's results in there from Kimberly Apartments. And all these results on Kimberly Apartments there are well below the eighty milligram per minute. So I talked to EPA about this and I asked him, until we can really get this thing rectified, could we get, also get a sample at this side of Kimberly Apartments? And, and then you see it from the results here that they're all low. But if you go out to the end of the line, up towards the posty, posty school, it triples. And that's where we have to get a sample site. We can't change that. So from these records here, I pretty much determined that the water right over the school, all downtown, because there is one sample in here in downtown, that is way under limit. The only bad water we got is going up to Kimberly Road. And that's where the, the time, uh, builds up in it and creates the high TTHMs. All the rest of the city is okay, but we still have to rectify twenty-two hundred customers in the water. There's only actually about nineteen customers that's bad, and they won't let us change that. Now, we did put in sprayers, mixers, and aerators in the two clear wells up in the water plant, and put in mixers at both reservoirs. And basically, they told us that we couldn't get as much as forty to forty-two percent reduction. Well, the last two quarters is when we had this thing in and it's into air. So as I was telling you a minute ago, when we was trying to fix this problem before we got the mixers, we had all the water towers down low, so the water would go through quicker and stuff. Uh, after talking to this company, which they didn't tell us at the beginning, the curvilles have to be tripled. And that's the difference. Uh, we, we normally run the curvilles at twelve and fifteen feet to eliminate, uh, the, the water getting old. And they probably told us that the water has to be old. And, and then the aerators, they'll take that out in the tank. So we raised it up thirty more feet. And the numbers are good. Numbers are in here. I'm sure that's something that's got my, my name on top of this is Jeff Traw. In the second sheet shows.
He was sent to us and emailed. You wouldn't have it yet.
Yeah, it shows the difference in the TTHMs from our, two, two quarters ago until the ones by distance. There are special samples on them and they're cut in half. So I think raising the level when the curvilles has fixed the issue. We'll probably do one more quarter. We, we may have to send a violation. But it looks like this is going to fix it. But we'll have to bring more lawyers, because there's a seven month, what's called run, running annual average. Actually, it's four months, four, four quarters. So you've got a whole year that, that shifts every quarter. And, and it's going to take a while to eliminate that design number, but I think it's going to do.
How often do you actually do the, the testing on that?
Well, the requirement is for them is, uh, every few months.
Right.
That's, that's what we're just saying. It's long. It takes a while.
But you do it more frequently.
Well, it had been since we've seen this wasn't going to work. And, uh, we've got the good numbers. I think that's telling us it's going to work, but now. But that's what takes so long. It's just, there are three months to do that. That really counts for the ordinance. Any questions? It gets pretty complicated.
Yeah, I, I just appreciate you being here and sharing that. Um, it's been seemingly a talking point on the radio. Um, there's some, there's some misinformation regarding it. It's not that the water is unsafe. Um, but, um, yeah, we'll, and I talked with, uh, Mr. Breeze, uh, and he said it would probably, we would receive two more notices than we did. We just received a notice and so we'll probably have one more, it sounds like, so.
Well, he probably told us that after we did the exam.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, we're good.
But you're saying the only place we have this problem is out by Old Poston School?
Yep.
And you only got what, nine customers out there on that?
About, about nineteen.
About nineteen? Now, I know, I noticed they, they was at one time using the poston school out there for something. Are, are they still using it where the consumption would still be used? Because once the school went away, that size of line and consumption out there definitely going to decrease.
That school out there, it's hardly anybody. I mean, it's maybe twenty kids, fat. They even got some of the restrooms and stuff shut off, so they're not using much water anymore.
Well, as I say, yeah, the lines were set up to help support the school when they put it out there.
Right, I see that.
So that, when it went down, so that means the water usage out there isn't going to be high, so it's going to suck, suffer for all of them.
Right, that, that, you're allowed to, under EPA rules, to flush water in this situ, situation like this, but it has to be, it has to be continuous. You can't, you can't just do it when you want to. It'll be continuous and then the water has to be dechlorinated before it goes into a stream.
Would it, would it be feasible to set up a schedule to be able to go out there and flush that system?
You can't do it by schedule. It's got, if you're going to do it, it's going to be continuous.
It's going to be a continuous flow?
Right.
Okay. I didn't know if you could, like, we can schedule like every, every month or every, every two weeks or something?
Well, EPA is trying to protect the customers. So are we. If you just, there's never been, those TTHMs can go up when you're not questioning.
Okay, any other questions? So the city is working to resolve it. The EPA is working with us. And hopefully we can get this resolved. And you said it's gone on for what? About six and a half years?
I've been here six and a half years. It's been here since, I mean, it was until they made the water line bigger out there. I was getting close to it being fixed. They didn't, I, I actually objected, objected to it in, in any way.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Thank you. All right. Long director update, Mr. Rowe?
Uh, yes, so I had circulated, um, an email, I guess apologies to the two, um, new members, uh, for not being included. Oh, thank you. Okay, so, um, I did receive correspondence from the state league of women voters. Thank you, Susan, for, for giving them that. Uh, I forgot to, um, click on, uh, um, basically what the, uh, state league is doing is just, um, announcing kind of their schedule for, um, per the council request that they initiate their own, um, public, series of public town halls for growing up a proposed ward map for council to consider. As you know, um, under, the charter does not authorize councils to draw wards. So council right, at this moment, this council does not have authority to adopt a ward map. Now, interestingly enough, if issue four passes, that will change. So right now, council has no authority and no duty to adopt the ward map under the charter. If issue four passes, that will change. Council will have authority to adopt the ward map and almost certainly a, a duty to do it timely. But, put, put that to the side. The thought was since the statutory council would certainly have authority to adopt a ward map next year, why don't we, uh, get that process started so that there's a proposal already on their lap as soon as possible? So if for some reasons it needs to be adopted immediately, it's already there. Time's been saved. So anyway, the League of Women Voters, um, has articulated basically their goals in answering that call. They're going to do it. They are ensuring that they will have control over it, so the city is not going to influence in any way their procedures. Obviously, any individual member of council or member of city, uh, employee or officer of the city can attend as a public citizen, but you're on an equal footing with everyone else in terms of comments. But the city itself is taking no position one way or the other about the ward maps. The one re, request that the city had made is, hey, make sure that any proposed ward map fully complies with all applicable law. It doesn't make sense to, and, and the, the state league knows this and they're very well, um, tasked at avoiding creating an illegal, uh, ward map, and that's the whole point of, of engaging in, in that process. So I've told them the city is, is grateful for it and appreciates that. Um, my understanding, I think Mr. Courtney had said their first town hall will be at the Hocking College Lodge, I believe, on April twenty-seventh. So when you complete the town hall's a tower five K, please run straight to the lodge and um, actually, it'd be nice to keep all of those people who are coming into town around, um, to support the businesses, but, um, we'll, we'll see how many people are hired after the five K, but, um, should be a busy and good day.
And, and that will be from two o'clock to four o'clock?
The League of Women, yes, yes. Two o'clock to four o'clock is my understanding. Um, I believe that they're working on a sequence and series of events throughout May and June. Right now, I believe that they're targeting July to present, but of course, that's kind of up in the air. We'll, we'll see. I think the reason, if I not to put any words in their mouth, but I think the reason that they're targeting that is, well, what if issue four does pass? Council may need to adopt a ward map before November. Um, obviously, if issue four doesn't pass, that changes, but we're kind of trying to travel down two parallel tracks at the same time, I guess, maybe the best way of putting it and, and making sure we, have all the contingencies in place. So again, thank the state league of women voters, um, for offering the help. Um, and I think the city's excited to see, to, um, what comes out of that process. Um, the other thing is real briefly, um, the city is in receipt of a letter from the Ohio Secretary of State's office regarding issue twenty-three. Um, they are requesting clerk submit documents relating to issue twenty-three. Um, I'll work with the clerk in, in getting that submitted. I'm a bit puzzled by the letter. All I'll say at this time is it appears the secretary of state considers the charter not to have been abolished by issue twenty-three. Um, that is a, a little bit unexpected, I suppose, um, but, um, we'll still need to comply with the secretary of state's office's, um, demand for information.
So question on that then, um, like the hierarchy in that situation, what was, does the court supersede the secretary of state?
The secretary of state was not, never part of the lawsuit. They're not bound by the, the court's orders.
So if they give a different ruling than the court, we have to follow what they state then, or does that work for the city?
Um, so the secretary of state can't issue binding orders against the city. Um, but their action would be relevant in litigation. I can explain why, but I can't explain it verbally.
Okay. Funny. Thank you.
Um, then, oh, just a reminder, since we have, uh, uh, two new council members, and this is actually the first time we've sworn in new council members since I've been city attorney. Just wanted to, um, remind both of you of the duty to complete the Ohio Sunshine Law Training. Of course, that applies to all elected officials, treasurer, auditor. Um, the requirement is that you complete the training, um, during the, before, during the term of office. Um, what you can do is folks can designate an individual to, to uh, take the training for them and that counts under the law. So like, you could have all of council designate one member of council to take the training. Um, but that, there just has to be some evidence of the training, of the designation for the training to count for all individual persons. Um, but I just wanted to let the new council members know that that is, um,
I think it was called the Ohio Sunshine Law?
Ohio Sunshine. It's a, it's a, it's a three-hour online training that's offered at various times. So it's, it's not too difficult. I, I will say, of course, um, Ms. Saul will appreciate this as a, as a court reporter. It is conducted by attorneys who tend to make things sometimes confusing when they're.
It's why it's three hours.
That wasn't the longest thing I watched online this week.
Is that long?
It's a long one.
Someone wouldn't go online and get.
It, it is online. I can even circulate the link.
You will, please.
Um, but just. Um, but just remember, um, with everyone's terms of office expiring in November, just make sure that that's um, completed in, in advance of, of that date. Um, but I, I can certainly circulate, and I guess, Mr. Tolliver, once we have, can you let me know what the new council member emails are, just so I can make sure I can get it circulated to them? Um, you'll just have to register and then make sure that the auditor of state and attorney general could both kind of get together to offer the training, just have record.
Another thing you have to think about too is the Ethics Commission, you have to file with them, so, here you go.
Um, and then kind of related to that, um, so the sunshine laws is kind of like an umbrella term to, that refers to both the public records law and then also the Open Meetings Act requirements. It has recently come to my attention that there may have been some violations of the Open Meetings Act some time ago, prior to my time as city attorney. Um, I'm just going to remind council, you have a duty to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, um, at all times, yes?
I'm sorry for the interruption, along, along these lines of thought, should we open the door?
It, it can be open or closed, I mean, it's whatever council wants.
It doesn't signify that it's a closed meeting, it's closed.
No, but if council want, if council wants the, the door to open, I'll go open the door. But I just need, I need instruction.
I just thought maybe they closed it because of noise, that's it.
I believe that's why it was.
I, I figured, but I, you know.
There is a line on the door that talks about violation, so if you walk, I, like me, I walk back to my box, I know they're here somewhere because there's always somebody else. Because I think I didn't, didn't see anybody.
We've, we've got the note meeting, because right now we're streaming everything on YouTube.
Thank you.
Related, related to that, just last week, um, a new law went into effect, um, that allows, so, let me back up. Remember COVID, when COVID came, there were some temporary measures at law relaxing some of the Open Meeting Act requirements to allow for virtual meetings. The, the Open Meetings Act, prior to that point in time, did not allow virtual meetings. There was just, just, I believe it went into effect April ninth, a new law went into effect to allow for virtual meetings of public entities, but only if the public entity first adopts a virtual meeting policy, and then all virtual meetings need to be held in conformity with that policy, which, um, part of, one of the requirements of that policy is a requirement that the city, in this case, and each individual council member have a robust internet connection to facilitate the virtual meeting, because they don't want the, the livestream to get cut off, that's been a recurring issue. My advice right now to the city would just, don't, don't touch that, uh, right now. Um, figure out the tech issues first before you even think about adopting a virtual meeting policy. I think just continuing with the physical meetings is the best course of action, is what the public is used to, is what the public expects. That can be revisited down the rows.
So are you stating that if, if we adopt a, a virtual meeting like that, then that's the only way the meeting will be held, there'll be no public being able to attend?
Well, they would attend virtually, so there has to be.
So there would be, but there would be no gallery in the chambers at that point if we adopted a policy such as that?
That, that could be a, a policy.
So it couldn't, it couldn't be just like it is now, where it's open, but we also broadcast?
Council could just say that the only way we're doing it to virtually is in conjunction with the physical meeting, we'll also broadcast it on YouTube, I mean, in fact, most villages I don't really even broadcast on YouTube, so, um, a lot of cities do, but villages don't, so there are a lot of municipalities that don't even do what the city's already doing. So, I mean, the city could certainly say our virtual meeting policy is there should be no virtual meeting separate from a physical in-person meeting, absent some sort of statewide COVID-like emergency. Um, and may, maybe that's, maybe that's the prudent way of doing it, but my recommendation is at this point in time, given the city's known technology issues, don't, don't go down that route. Um, and then, so the, the partial, um, I guess the last thing I had to update was just, I think Mr. um, Taylor had touched on this, with the committee report, the partial vacation of the alleyway, um, we just need to get the, um, my understanding is all the relevant property owners are consenting to it, so it just needs, the paperwork needs to be, um, drawn up and presented um, to council for basically vacating the alleyway, which as I indicated before, you practically what a vaca- vacated alleyway means is you take the property on the left, the property on the right, now I did, I did that right. Um, you split the alley down the middle, the right half goes to the right property owner, the left half goes to the left property owner, and then it, they um, have possession and title to that portion of the alley. So it, the public at that point ceases to have their rights to use the alleyway. Even if there's a tree or, um, building in it, the right of the public to use that right of way exists until council vacates, but once, once council, um, vacates the alleyway, then the public rights cease.
Any questions for Mr. Rowe? So in, uh, pertaining to that then, is that something that we can have available for the next meeting then?
I can.
Okay, and then, um, I'll give you the information on the, um, surveyor in case you feel that we still need that.
Okay.
Um, and then can I ask you about an update on the, the, uh, uh, acceptance of the donation from the prank family?
I could have that at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Um, I did have a conversation with a member of the family regarding that, I just haven't had the time to complete that, but it's, it's on my radar.
Okay.
Um, so I think I have all the information I need.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yes.
May I ask a question, I was at the, um, Athens County Health Department meeting, and I apologize for coming late. Had, did we talk about the swimming pool and whether we have had an inspection of it, and what, what is the status of the pool?
Yeah, we did discuss that under committee meetings, Mr. Ta- uh, Mr. Taylor, would you touch on that?
Sure, and I've been in talks with Mr. Cohen, he sent an email out this evening. Uh, he's contacted multiple engineers to, uh, be able to inspect the pool, and, um, we have not had, been able to have an inspection yet, um, we are planning on moving forward with opening pools, uh, we're just maybe delayed a little bit just based on how quickly we can get that inspection.
It's positive you're going to open it, thank you, all of you, and I'm, I'm just one participant out of this whole town who loves the swimming pool, so thank you for sharing your knowledge.
We just want to make sure it's safe.
Uh, before we move on to ordinances, um, Chief Tolliver, I ha- I seen an email from Mr. Cohen, was that his report for tonight?
It was, yeah.
Could you, do you have a copy of that?
Uh, I certainly, but I can't, however.
Okay, if we could, yeah, if we could touch on his, uh, report, because there's a couple of things in there I'd like to see, uh, reported.
So Mr. Cohen, one of the sent his apologies, probably he wanted to make it tonight, he's got some personal things kind of to take care of. So the last Thursday, he along with two utility techs and three of the utility workers from the water treatment plant participated in consign basis training along with chief barber and a couple members of the fire department. On Tuesday, four eight, he along with two other utility techs attended a seven-hour GIS training over in Dublin. All the meters should be switched out for the water meter project that's been going on for some time uh, in the very near future, and they'll be doing a walkthrough to generate a punch-out list to finish wrapping up that project. The phase four sewer project is in progress, with directional drilling taking place right now on Riverside Drive. And then following on Riverside Drive, they'll be moving to Diamond Brick Road. Since his last update, there have been twenty-two service leaks on the water line, there have been nine leak one weeks. They've installed three new fire hydrants. And then he also sent a summary regarding the pool, and says, uh, he's been in contact with a couple of different companies now to have the pool inspected, and as you can understand, this is a busy time of year for that, everyone's trying to get their pools checked out part of the season. So as of now, nobody has come to do an actual physical inspection yet. Um, so he and I have been talking, and we believe we plan, we will be opening the pool, however, we'll be doing that knowing that the pool is leaking. A decent amount, not a substantial amount, to be super concerned about, but, um, we'll have the pool opened up this season and a long-term plan to get the pool repaired going into that season. That way we don't have this issue again when we're kind of rushing at the last minute to find someone to inspect it and get it taken care of. We'll have any questions on that? Ms. Saul?
Um, the water leakage, how is that? How's that paid for?
In terms of?
Who pays it?
Uh, the city does.
The city does.
And it's all a direct monetary cause, uh, since we're producing the water, so it costs us a minor amount in chemicals of the plant to produce the water.
I did notice a fire hydrant that was bagged today, I don't remember where I seen it. Um, do we have other fire hydrants that still need repair or replace?
Not a lot right now.
Okay, yeah.
Water department, how are they handling that as far as, is each house going to be changed?
Are you talking about the water meter?
No, I'm sorry, the water meter.
Yeah, so they've already gone through quite a while ago, and all the residential meters got replaced with these new ones that, um, send your reading electronic one.
Oh, so the.
I guess I send an analog to a little satellite that then sends it here and records your water usage from your meter. The problem we have is the company has had a lot of problems getting all the commercial meters installed, really big, you know, four to six inch size water meters.
Um, so they're now actually going to change the water meter itself, this is an addition?
No, they had already changed them, they went through several years ago, before I, I think it was before I even started here, and changed out everyone's residential water meter with a new one.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just been several years of back and forth trying to get all the commercial ones wrapped up.
Thanks again.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Tolliver. Okay, moving on to ordinances, uh, second reading, ordinance twenty-one twenty-five.
Dan Norton's authorizing the city to enter a new agreement with D L Z Ohio for professional design services for renovations within a city of Nelsonville facility. Whereas there is a need for a professional design work associated with the permitting document, production, change of occupancy submission, and building permit submission for renovation that have been performed within the city of Nelsonville facility, including converting the street department building into an exercise facility, complete with new additional bathrooms and showers. The project is required as part of the city's obligations under the current police department collective bargaining agreement entered into by the city in two thousand twenty-four. Whereas D L Z has indicated it is willing to perform all professional services that may be authorized by the city for the design of the project, whereas the cost for D L Z's professional design services are not to exceed nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager, acting city manager, and the police chief is hereby authorized and directed to execute the agreement between the city and D L Z Ohio for professional services attached to and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit one. Council hereby appropriates a sum not to exceed nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars to cover D L Z Ohio's professional design services to be rendered pursuant to their agreement. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will enacted by council on second reading the fourteenth day of April two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, motion to adopt?
So do you.
Second. Any citizens' comments? Any council discussion? What call the roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonny?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-five passed. Ordinance twenty-two twenty-five, does someone would like to introduce it?
Oh, introduce it.
And ordinance reappointing the police chief as acting city manager during the vacancy in the office of the city manager and authorizing a monthly stipend for the acting city manager for additional temporary duties and declaring an emergency. Whereas on July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, city council appointed Devon Tolliver, Nelsonville Police Chief, to serve as acting city manager for this city on a temporary basis. Whereas the vacancy arose in the office of city manager as of April seventh, two thousand twenty-four, due to a resignation by the city manager. Whereas council finds it necessary to appoint a city official to serve as acting city manager until the vacancy in this office of city manager is filled. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section five point zero three, provides in part that in the event of vacancy in the office of the city manager, the council may designate a person as acting city manager who shall exercise all powers, duties, and functions of the city manager until a manager is appointed, unquote. Whereas council finds it appropriate to continue to designate and appoint a police chief as acting city manager pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, section five point zero three. Whereas council finds it appropriate to continue to provide an additional monthly stipend to the police chief as acting city manager for the additional temporary duties by the acting city manager. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby confirms its appointment of Devon Tolliver, Nelsonville Police Chief, to serve as acting city manager for the city on a temporary basis while vacancy in the office of the city manager remain. City council hereby reappoints Devon Tolliver, Nelsonville Police Chief, to serve as acting city manager for the city on a temporary basis while a vacancy in the office of city manager remain. The city shall continue to pay the acting city manager an additional monthly stipend for additional temporary duties in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. The city auditor is hereby directed to ensure there is no disruption in payment on the full stipend amount for the month of April two thousand twenty-five due to the April seventh effective date of the resignation of the city manager. Whereas the acting city manager for any reason shall cease assuming the additional temporary duties, the additional monthly stipend shall cease. The city auditor is hereby authorized to direct and directed to take all steps necessary to carry the provisions of this ordinance into effect. The council hereby finds this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to suspend with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency manager pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty and Nelsonville City Charter, Article Four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of city government, as the city needs an acting city manager to temporarily serve as chief executive of the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading the fourteenth day of April two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to suspend the rules, so we. Second. Second. Uh, council discussion on the suspension? Roll call on the suspension?
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonny?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Dawson?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adopt, so we. Second. Any citizens' comments on adoption? Council discussion?
I just got one, there was a typo, uh, where the vacancy arose and the city manager was twenty-five, not twenty-four.
Yeah. How was the amount of this stipend considered? I mean, I, I realized the public was not know everything that the chief does as the acting city manager. I do. So how, I feel this is a very low stipend considering all he does for the cities. So I would like to know how we came to that amount, if I may.
So it's the amount that Chief Oliver has been receiving as the acting city manager?
Right, I think, I think Ms. Son's question is how did council come up with the point five hundred dollars last year?
Well, I didn't realize that this was done last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm sorry, chief. I think that's true. I apologize. I apologize.
Well, but the, the way the city does its withholding though is he has, his full withholding is taken out of this paycheck along with his regular police chief paycheck, so the take-home paycheck was actually substantially less than this.
Well, I, I realized that, I realized. I'm just saying, I, it's just.
The, the federal government is hoping he forgets to do his taxes. We thank you for your attention. You get a few years, I'm, I'm sure.
Well, any other comments from council? I would like to thank Chief Oliver for accepting and doing these duties after.
Thank you for twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, with that, um, court call the roll.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Son?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two twenty-five passed. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it?
Introduce it.
And ordinance tentatively awarding a construction contract to B V Weber Construction Incorporated for the city's water system improvements base three project. Subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio E P A declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to complete its water system improvements base three project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has applied to the Ohio E P A for a portion of the funding for the water treatment improvement base three project. Whereas the city placed a contract out for bid in accordance with the requirements of Nelsonville City Charter and Ohio Revised Code. Whereas it was determined that the bid of B V Weber Construction Incorporated is the lowest investment and that B V Weber Construction Company Incorporated has the ability to complete the work in the allotted time. Whereas the city's engineer recommends acceptance and confirmation of B V Weber Construction Company Incorporated bid. Whereas the city engineer recommends the contract for the project be awarded accordingly. Whereas the Ohio E P A requires notice of the city's acceptance of the bid to be provided to the Ohio E P A by April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the city desires to tentatively award the contract to B V Weber Construction Incorporated contingent upon all project funding being finalized and released. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows, that the city of Nelsonville tentatively awards the construction contract to B V Weber Construction Incorporated in accordance with the engineer's bid recommendation letter subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio E P A. Fund for the project shall be appropriated by separate ordinance enacted by council subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio E P A. The city auditor is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to carry the provisions of this ordinance into effect. City auditor and or acting city manager are hereby directed to call the city engineer to provide any and all required notification to the Ohio E P A by April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five deadline. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in open, I'm sorry, in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty and Nelsonville City Charter, Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city must abide by the timeline imposed by the E P A so that the city can ensure maximum grant funding for the phase three water project and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading the fourteenth day of April two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So live.
Second.
Uh, council discussion on suspension? Court call the roll on suspension?
Ms. Son?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So live.
Second.
Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
I have a question, how much was the bid?
I'd be happy to do this one.
Okay.
So the engineer estimated the project to cost just shy of three point six million dollars. B V Weber's bid was two point nine million dollars. So it's about six hundred thousand dollar difference. The project is half grant, half loan, so we have a three hundred thousand dollar savings for the city.
Any other council discussions? Court call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Joseph Saul? Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonny?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty-five passed.
If I could add, um, B V Weber actually has been partnered with the city on, on, uh, most of those projects with the water sewer and served us pretty well. And then very friendly, got a lot of complaints, or a lot of compliments. Compliments on, uh, sorry Dave, that if you're watching, that was on the recording. Um, but a lot of compliments from his team, you know, the way that they've interacted with the public, so.
Based on the duty complaints that were really about, you know, as resolved and.
It's, it's tough too, like Scott Street, for instance, in that last project, I had on there when that was shut down. That was pretty disruptive to that entire neighborhood and had some main, uh, thoroughfare coming from, like, local to Nelsonville. And, uh, of course they had a couple issues they had to contend with and move things and, and it, but they, it was really smooth. They did, they did a nice work.
As well as the project on top of Ace and City Hill there. Yeah, that was a big one.
So I appreciate them being our partner, so.
Absolutely. Uh, ordinance twenty-four twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it?
Thank you. And ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an overflow sewer grant for O S G agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for design of the phase five sewer project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to design the phase five sewer project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for O S G financing from the Ohio E P A to finance the phase five sewer project. Whereas the Ohio E P A requires a government authority to pass legislation for application and the execution of an agreement. Whereas council finds it is in the best interest for the city to apply for O S G financing from the Ohio E P A to fully finance the design of the phase five project. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby declare it in the public and best interest of the city and is necessary to apply for O S G financing from the Ohio E P A to fully finance the design of the phase five sewer project. Council finds it is necessary to complete the phase five sewer project for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Nelsonville. The acting city manager shall be and is hereby authorized to request from the Ohio E P A the O S G financing required to complete the design of the project. The acting city manager is hereby authorized to execute any grant application or other grant agreement required by the Ohio E P A, subject to the confirmation by council. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will enacted by council on second reading, twenty-eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-five.
I know this is the first reading, but is there any council discussion? Okay. Uh, ordinance twenty-five twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it?
And ordinance confirming and awarding the contract to B L Anderson for a project to retrofit an existing state-of-control canal at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant and appropriating funds for the project in declaring an emergency. Whereas council authorized by duly adopted resolution twenty-three to twenty-nine publishing a request for proposal under applicable competitive bidding requirements for the project to retrofit an existing state-of-control canal at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant. Whereas the city published such request for proposals. Whereas the city received only one bid in response to the request for proposals. Whereas the bid was submitted by B L Anderson and the city finds B L Anderson's bid to be appropriate and acceptance and confirmation of the bid is in the best interest of the city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby confirms B L Anderson's bid attached to two as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference for all purposes and hereby awards the contract for the project to retrofit an existing state-of-control canal at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant to B L Anderson consistent with the terms of the bid set forth in exhibit A. The act, city manager, acting city manager, police chief, and city auditor are hereby authorized to execute a contract with B L Anderson consistent with the terms of the bid set forth in exhibit A. City council hereby appropriates an amount equal to the sum of eighty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars to pay B L Anderson for services to be rendered in connection with the project assisted with B L Anderson's bid set forth in exhibit A. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government to ensure timely commencement and completion of the project to retrofit an existing state-of-control canal at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate any disbursement of terms authorized by the ordinance. Will enacted by council on first reading, fourteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So live.
Council discussion on suspension?
Well, before we suspend, I got, I got a question here. Uh, I got the bid proposal. I got a problem with it. Cause it says supplier shall remove the existing control panel equipment, transport install new components required for the retrofit. Install pre-wire, the whole nine yards. Then it says that our people are gonna reinstall. And then after we reinstall it, then they're gonna do the testing. The supplier that's removing it should reinstall a piece of equipment and give us a finished product instead of us having to have, is the only, is the only question I have.
I can't remember the specifics, cause this was from.
Well, I mean.
The plane was drafted in.
Because it said, it says it right here, it says, uh, and return the upgrade control panel equipment to the water treatment plant. Installation of the upgrade control panel equipment shall be the responsibility of the city of Nelsonville. And then it says supplier shall perform startup services once installation of the city is complete.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, why, why are we allowing them to remove it and then not reinstall it for us? See now they're selling us a system.
So this plane was drafted up early in twenty-four?
Like, cause, cause I can, I'd see this coming up and say, well, we got a problem here installing it, well, I need extra money.
Yeah, the plan was for our normal electrician to be there and handle those installs, that way if somebody comes up in the future, we can have them. Well, I don't remember.
I would say just, just that right there, me working with, with contracts and stuff right there. That's set there for an extra in, in, in a bidding. Extra money on, on the table if they'll want. Why, and I'm just curious why it wasn't in the initial, uh, program to have them remove, install, and give us a finished system, not go through and then we do it and now the extra time to help troubleshoot anything we do wrong is gonna cost us more money.
We should be able to just receive like a schematic or whatever they're installing and, and an electrician with an education should be able to read it back.
That, it, it, but we, here's where you get into the, into the situation, I'm an electrician, so I, I know that's no problem. When you get the situation, it's okay, here, we gave you this unit. When it left the shop, it worked fine. Well, you guys must have done something to it while you was installing it. So we're not gonna worry, but we'll fix it, but we went out the money to fix it. And it happens all the time, especially in construction and, and upgrading, uh, on equipment with people. So if they remove it, they shouldn't be the ones that would have to replace it. I don't know if it'd have to go back out bid for that. But they should, they should be removing it, give us a new upgraded system and then reinstalling it, giving, and giving us finished product, not, hey, we're gonna give you half here, then you do this half, then we'll help finish this half. Because it sets ourselves up for, uh, another big cost, big cost.
All right, the more crazy, the more confusing.
Yep, I have a question, uh, Chief Oliver. If we were to move this to second reading and then under suspension then, would that affect the timeline of the project more than two weeks?
I don't think so, that can be impacted.
That would be fine to wait two weeks that way.
If you guys need to discuss it more, you need to discuss it more, so.
The, the challenge is though, if, if, if you, if you change the scope of the job, you're gonna have to rebid it.
Right, I don't buy me much.
Which I'm just saying is gonna be months down the road.
Well, it shouldn't be that much time down the road, because, because you put a change in on a bid and you say, okay, here, this change to it, boom, what's it gonna cost me?
All I'm saying is though, you have to give.
It's almost like, oh, it is, it's basically like a same, same change order coming in.
But, but it's, but it's not, this is just a bid process. So you're gonna put it out, it's gonna have to probably sit for, be published for thirty days to accept bids.
I'm, I'm just telling you, with the way it is right now.
It'd be different if you accepted the bid and now you put a change order. Does that make sense versus if you're going to change the scope of the work, now you're gonna have to rebid it based on the new scope of the work?
How many bids have we had, do we have come into this?
You're the only one.
Yeah, there you go. And so basically going back to them and saying, hey, this is what we need you to do, what's it gonna cost to change a bid?
Sounds like we would have to accept in order to.
To do that, yeah, cause in theory, if you change the scope of the job, it could be, there might be other businesses that might wanna bid on it now.
It's, it's better to get it out in contract writing to begin with, with an end price than had to say, okay, well, what if this happens and, you know, a time and material, like, it need, it needs to be hard set the day you install it and how much it's gonna cost us and give us a finished product.
Chief, do you know the reason? I know you said it was that early last year, so there was a whole new manager in here, you had nothing to do with that.
Correct.
So, but that being said, do you have any idea why it was put that way? That they would install it, but then we would do the finish?
I think there was a reason, but I don't know what it is, I'll probably. I think there was a reason, but I don't know what it is, I'll probably. Uh, Mr. Trow, who was here earlier, will explain that.
Vow.
There was a reason then that it's.
Yeah, I believe there was some, I believe they had a reason behind it, but I, I don't know what it was.
So, if I may, we have a re, um, motion on the floor to suspend the rules on a second. Um. We can do the vote, and if it goes to second reading, that would give us time to.
So if the motion fails, then it would go, it would have to go through two readings.
Correct, right, that's exactly. And now we give time to seek the answers.
Right, correct.
As the law is concerned.
And you can suspend the rules on the second.
To implement it.
Implement it immediately, yep. I think that's what we should do.
Okay. All right, clerk of call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Peck?
No.
Mr. Coman?
No.
Ms. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Paul?
No.
Okay, so this will go to second reading.
Um, Mr. President, can we, uh, can we ask, uh, Mr. Tolliver if he might be able to speak with Mr. Trow and, and get an answer for us and maybe email it to us before the next meeting?
Yeah, and I think we should, um, probably have a utility committee.
We can do that also.
That way we can add clarification from the committee.
But we get, we have to, we have to reshuffle committees.
Yes, absolutely. Chief Tolliver?
Mr. Kelly might be able to better speak than a committee in regard to that.
Okay, perfect, yes.
All right, thank you. Um. Resolution twenty-three thirty-seven. If someone would like to introduce it?
Introduce it.
A resolution to the Ohio Revised Code five seven zero five point zero three B requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by three mil replacement levy for a general construction, reconstruction, resourcing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges to be placed on the ballot after November fourth, two thousand twenty-five federal election as a replacement levy and becoming an emergency. Whereas the current street levy for the general fund, construction, reconstruction, resourcing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges is due to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in need of some funds to adequately construct, reconstruct, resurface, and repair the streets, roads, and bridges located within the city of Nelsonville. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code, Section five seven zero five point zero three B, requires the city of Nelsonville to request the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by the replacement of the city's three mil levy expiring in two thousand twenty-five as a prerequisite to replacing, I'm sorry, to placing the issue on the ballot. Now therefore be recalled by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The Department of Council shall certify a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify to the city of Nelsonville the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the replacement of a five-year three mil levy outside the ten mil limitation for the general constructions, reconstruction, resourcing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges to be placed on the ballot for November fourth, two thousand twenty-five federal election, and to run for a term of five years commencing January first, two thousand twenty-six as an replacement levy, if approved by the voter. The Department of Council is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor as provided in Exhibit A. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken to, uh, taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and at all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal actions were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council, on first reading the fourteenth day of April two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to a ballot?
Sure.
Second? Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
Mr. President, just, so just the, the answer to your question, this is just asking the county auditor to certify dollar amounts. So this is not putting anything on the ballot, it's just getting the dollar amount, then it comes back to council or.
And just for clarification, it always used to be two resolutions, one for, um, replacement.
Been a change in the law.
Yeah, so there's a change in the law, so now they only do replacements.
Correct.
Um. So they used to give us two different numbers, there's only gonna be one number going forward, so it only gives you one resolution.
Which I might add is to the benefit of taxpayers, because the difference between a replacement and renewal levy is updating the base level, um, tax base at which the rates are applied, so obviously in general overtime properties increase in value. A replacement levy takes the lower value, i.e., the result is a lower tax assessed. A, so, sorry, a renewal, a replacement, it's updated property values and almost certainly therefore a higher tax burden. So the law has changed to eliminate that, um, higher, which I think is in general cities' practice, it's always been to go with a lower tax burden resolution anyway.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Clerk of call the roll.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Okay, moving on to City Manager's report.
I would circle back around to the EPA Director's findings and orders that we got issued, which has been a, for, just kind of reiterating what Mr. Trow said earlier, it looks like we'll be able to get that resolved with no additional appropriations needed and no additional cost to the city. Um, the mobility corridor project that we have applied for and received funding for, um, through a sidewalk on Chestnut Street, I believe, has been kind of postponed and rescheduled to take place in next year. That way it doesn't conflict with the canal street repayment project, makes traffic a little bit easier. Yeah, you don't wanna have both those roads running parallel, both undergoing construction at the same time. Um, we're still taking applications for the code enforcement officer. Applications are due by this Wednesday, as of right now, I've got, uh, six candidates, so after the deadline closes on Wednesday, I'll work on scheduling some of those people to get interviewed. We posted our municipal prosecutor position, we're still working forward prosecutor. Um, I had the aquatics director position listed, the deadline to apply for that was last Friday. I received one application, and that was for Miss Leslie Hinger. So, that being said, I would recommend we hire Miss Hinger for the aquatics director for the twenty twenty-five pool season.
I'll make a motion to hire Miss Hinger for the twenty-five pool season. Any council discussion? I think that would be great, um, Miss Hinger is more than familiar with the, with the facility, so I think it'd be great. Uh, clerk of call the roll.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonne?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
We are, we are voting.
Sorry, I didn't realize we're gonna, um, make a vote, go vote here, but we just, um, made a motion in the second to hire Leslie Hinger as the Aquatics Center Manager, uh, for this year, for the summer, and, uh, it's up to you, though. Yeah, man.
Or abstain, you have.
Oh, yeah, you go, there are options.
Can I ask any questions?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Could you help me a little bit with her application?
Yeah, so actually, she was the only applicant.
Okay.
She's a schoolteacher in Nelson, New York, she's been teaching there for quite a while, quite a while, and she's also been the aquatics director probably four or five different, four or five years or more.
Probably five or six years, probably.
Yeah, she's done some tasks, and always does a great job.
Probably longer than that, actually, because she taught my kids when they were in elementary school, and then she also was their, was the manager of the pool when they were first lifeguards there, so that's, it's probably been long, probably closer to eight years, I'd say.
Okay, yeah, I feel comfortable with that, yes, thank you.
Okay, no prejudice.
Then I have one more hiring recommendation, Chief Barber wasn't able to make it tonight, and he's making a recommendation to move a current volunteer firefighter, Robert Kovacs, to a current open part-time position. Firefighter Kovacs surpasses the minimum certification requirements for the position and will be a great asset to the department. Um, I know he has prior experience with some other area fire departments, maybe a little further away from here, but uh, he's picked up some volunteer shifts, he's getting more and more with everyone. So they'd like to move him up to that part-time position so he can actually start building ships and helping guys out.
So we're moving him to part-time?
From volunteer to part-time.
From volunteer to part-time.
Well, we've got the open spot on the part-time?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move Robert Kovac from, uh, volunteer to part-time firefighter.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion on that? Clerk of call the roll.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yep.
Mr. Lawson?
You?
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any questions for Chief Tolliver? Did you have anything else?
No, that's all I have, but.
This is, uh, I wanted to make a report, if you wanted me to, I forgot to also report on.
Okay.
Um, one is, um, he had instructed me to, just to help facilitate committee meetings, prepare a kind of a worksheet for, um, the committees, just to fill out to let me know what they discussed, what legislation they need to prepare, so I'll get that together and, um, all, um, Mr. Lawson, I believe, had asked about making sure that they could be electronically, and not just hand feel, I can provide it in both ways for the, for the committees. Um, the other thing is, so at the beginning of the meeting, there was that incident. Um, the individual involved has been charged, but on the advice of council was released after the certification was issued, but let council know. Um. And then the, um, last thing was, I know this had been a question before about the cost to the city for the, uh, appeal of issue, the issue twenty-three litigation to the Supreme Court. Um, the total cost to the city was three thousand sixty dollars, um, which is less than a third of what I am projecting it might cost the city. Um, I just wanted to let the council know that.
I have a question for Mr. Tolliver. Um, what's the date on that, do we have an Easter egg hunt happening at the park?
Uh, I believe that already happened. Someone else, they couldn't have it at the park due to the flooding, but I hope they had it over by the panties and leather thing, or one of those lots.
I just don't remember the eaters, I mean, I'm sorry.
There's a, I think the one you're thinking of is the Hocking Mally Scenic Railway is having an Easter egg hunt on the nineteenth. They, they are holding, um, one train at eleven AM and one at two PM, and they're gonna drive the kids up to a, um, a field up in Haydenville, and they're gonna look for eggs there.
Cool, thank you.
Okay.
I got a question. Have we, have we had a chance to do anything more on getting, uh, an HR, a department route through here, or some type of HR?
We haven't, but I know the Mayor's Partnership for Progress has been working on that some in the background, and I haven't followed up with them, no, a lot, but I'll, I'll check out.
Thank you.
Anything else? Right, thank you, Chief Tolliver. So good of the order, Ms. Sonne, would you like to start?
Well, I know that everyone has probably seen the signs around town about, say, Nelsonville. The only thing I can ask you to do is please read what the proposal says. You want a mayor, it's going to give you a mayor. The other way, you do not get that mayor until God bless you, next year, I'm sorry. So, just think about it, read it, understand it. And number four is gonna save the city, it's not gonna lose it. So please, please, read number four carefully. And don't be influenced by the one individual that gets on the radio and carries on. There is a grudge against the council, and that's the way he's taking it out. So, I did not mean to get on a big political kick right now, but the time draws near. And it's very important, you read what it says about the mayor. You get the mayor with number four. And I thank you for your time, sorry.
Very well said. So.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so I know Ms. Joseph Paul has some questions concerning issue four also. Um, so maybe we should take this opportunity since you brought it up, Ms. Sonne, to maybe kind of discuss it a little bit here? If anyone has comments?
Sure, um, I, I've been getting this question from voters, and as I read the, um, ballot language, it doesn't explicitly say, but it is implied that the, um, mayor is in elected position and only appointed if there is a vacancy. Um, is, am I inferring that correctly?
I think that's the correct way to read it.
Okay. Um. So if issue four passes, we will elect a mayor who serves a term starting in December? Or would it be, would it still be January?
Um. It would be, it would be in December first, because that's when the charter, the chart, so the December first start date won't, well, it's actually technically not December first, just happens to be December first this year, the first Monday in December. That part of the charter is not getting changed by, by this, so yes. If issue four is passed, there will be an interim mayor appointed, um, I believe in June, by the council. And then that individual is allowed to run for mayor, there will still be the election in November for a mayor who will take office this year, December first, which happens to be the first Monday in December.
Okay.
And, and any petitions for anyone who would wanna run in their current form of government, those would be due in August.
Okay.
So anybody who would want to run for council or for the mayor would have to fill out the petitions and complete that term in, in August to be on the November ballot.
The folks who have already turned in petitions for, um, council at large, auditor, um, city council president and mayor would, I mean, I, I, I guess it would be up to the Board of Elections, right? Whether.
No, I think, I think, I think actually council would need to take action, for example, council could just pass an ordinance saying, hey, if you, if you file petitions to run under the statutory form, we will by law convert those into petitions to run for the charter in November.
Okay.
Um. That might be the simplest fix, there probably may, may be some other ways of fixing it, but that, that's just one thing, one option that comes to mind, I, the Board of Elections does not have any, like the Secretary of State, the Board of Elections doesn't have authority to order people around. You don't really have much authority to do anything, their job is to administer elections and make sure that they're fair, open, and lawful. Their, their role is basically ministerial, they don't have any independent, um, authority, they can't change the law. Their job is just to take the law as they find it and make sure it's followed. Council can actually change the law, subject to, you know, the charter and the constitution. Um, but the Board of Elections can only do what the law tells them to do.
Either way, though, um, either way, still gonna require quite a few people to still complete petitions and submit for either form of government. Um, so for a bunch of folks that are hungry and fighting to keep their own power. Um, so for a bunch of folks that are hungry and fighting to keep their own power, there's not an existing council member right now that has, or my knowledge, has decided to run again in the fall, so doesn't look like we're fighting. Yeah, except for one, he's running for mayor though.
Yeah, he's running for mayor, so.
I need to give you four free signatures.
I've already submitted.
No, I, I mean for
Okay.
Prior to you and Cameron being uh, placed on there, yeah, no, for clarity.
I'm telling the newbies.
Yeah, you, you, uh, you were being accused of fighting and trying to retain power or seat, so.
Yeah, speaking of, um, the only terms of, of, the only terms of elected officials who are currently in office that will extend past twenty twenty-five, if the charter is kept in place, would be Marianne Ms. Sykes and Mr. Peck's, right, or one of all? What everybody's?
Come November, everybody.
Full time. Even if, even if.
You're, you're, you're.
Nancy would be the only one that would actually.
Twenty twenty-seven.
You and, and Nancy, Ms. Sonic are filling um, a term that since there is a resignation, that doesn't allow you to carry on past this year.
Okay.
Correct.
So what, due to the appointment, there would essentially be a special election for your seat, Mr. Peck's seat in November, for the balance of the unexpired term. I believe the only one would be Ms. Sonic, whose term extends beyond November thirtieth of this year. Um, and that's, well, the city auditors does, but because of the impending vacancy in that office, there will be a special election anyway in November for the balance of that term. The city treasurer's term of office expires November thirtieth, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Everybody else?
It's, 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 it's going to be um, a lot of.
Now, basically, i- if it's still retained of the charter, the only one who'll be here is Ms. Sonic. Cause like I say, outside of uh, everybody has the two, outside the newbies, nobody here is filed petition to go in. So the, the bulk, the bulk, uh, the bulk story about where we want power, well, that's out the window because we're not, we're not, most of it, like I said, we're not rerunning again. Um, when we go to that, to the, to the, to the form of government, the people in Nelsonville are giving up their sovereignty. They have right now, under the charter, they can set what they wanna do. Once you go out to the statutory, what the state sets is what you got. If you don't like it, then you have to vote, and then you have to change it in four years. Right now, they, going to the statutory, they're telling you that we're gonna set up boards and we're gonna elect people for each boards and everything. Right now, we don't have boards. They're, they're not, they're not, not exist. So what's happening? Everybody is running as an independent and who knows, where you from, you vary four, five road, roads, uh, areas and stuff. If you look to people that so, so far signed up to look, to run for office, they're the same individuals that you all voted off. That the voters have voted off once before. And the problem that I have is that if nobody else goes, stands up and comes up to run against them, then they're automatically there. So you tell me who's looking to get the power. Because when they run unopposed, they're in. And right now, there's a position that I know of outside of a couple of, well, actually, there's no one, there's no one being opposed running, except for mayor. I heard Jim Pancake and John, and Mr. Flowers is, is running for, has signed up to run for mayor. Other than that, the other individuals, they're in. So you all decide, I mean, most, most of the council here is gonna be gone.
I was gonna say, you bring up a good point about home rule. Um, from what I understand, a lot of the realities of um, issue four would be parallel to the realities of issue twenty-three with the, with the minor change of um, uh, elected officials being nonpartisan versus partisan, um, and the retention of the, of the charter, um. I I have to assume that there's a reason why nobody in Ohio has, no municipality in Ohio has gone from a charter government to a statutory government before, and it's only ever been the other way around.
Because of the fact you give up so much power, and sovereignty as thus individual citizens.
Which brings me to my question, if we do abolish the charter effectively, and then the city of Nelsonville voters, everyone decides that, you know, we actually do want to have home rule, would we be able to go, would we be able to reestablish a charter? What would that take?
So, so there's no limit on the number of times the voters can decide their form of government, so in the future, they could vote to adopt a new charter or a different charter. And there's nothing in, in the law that pre- precludes, it sounds silly, but it, it's not illegal. The voters could have on the ballot every single primary, every single general election, whether to adopt a charter or not. Eventually, they'd get tired of it, so it would stop, but that's a practical constraint, not a legal constraint. So the, the voters could vote to abolish, uh, uh, well, the voters could uh, vote in nineteen ninety-four to adopt a charter, they could vote to abolish a charter, they could then immediately turn around and vote to re-adopt uh, uh, the charter, they could vote then to abolish, I mean, it's
it's very challenging.
But that's all, but, but there's, all, all, all that exists then is just a practical or political constraint, there's no legal constraint to having a bunch of, a series of votes. I, I, I think it's correct, you wanna avoid the uh, anything that seems to be chaotic or unnecessary, but there's no legal constraint, like if enough petitioners, uh, well, there's no constraint on council even putting up, adopting a charter. Um, whenever council thinks that, that's probable, which is what happened with issue four. Or you could have citizens circulating petition, there are two ways of adopting a charter. And either way, we'll get it on the ballot. Again, no legal constraint, it could happen every election, just won practically, I think. But there's no legal.
And, and the problem is, is right now, our charter has, has been in almost thirty years with no change. Nobody wanted, and nobody's bought up, as a matter of fact, one of the individuals is totally against it right now. He's one of the longer running members on the council, he never once bought up the opportunity to wanna change it. So we can change it through the mayor, we can change it any way we want. If the citizens get to the point where they don't like something in the charter, then they can form a co- a coalition, get the proper amount of signatures, and make council put it on the ballot. To where the, the, within the statutory, you put it on the ballot, but four years later, you vote on it.
So you're saying that they could have, for example, um, and started an initiative to transform the city manager role, or in an appointed executive role to a elected executive role like mayor?
Just like everybody runs for council, our attorney can say, okay, one individual runs for, or individual runs for mayor, and that mayor elected by the people, and this is his duty, just like we went to run for the president of the council. This is chose by the voters.
Which is one of the things that issue four would do if enacted. Um, so I, my question now is, what is, what can be done to foster more conversation about the details of this? I, I understand that the city is doing, um, is sending out a mailer, um, and putting uh, the the um, initiative text in.
I don't, I don't believe, we, we as council can legally do that.
We can't, we.
So two, two things, the city is legally required under the Ohio Constitution to send out that mail. Um, the second point is council members per the charter are allowed to engage whatever political politicking they want to, in fact, they have it, here's a, um, I'm just uh, pull up the language, um, um, except for one's own campaign, no employee or officer of the city, other than an elected official or a member of a board of commission of the city shall take part in the campaign for the office, and it can, now that, that's actually just um, dealing with the candidacy of persons, not issues, so there's no constraint, I, first off, a member of council is allowed to politic for somebody else. So a city attorney, for example, I'm not allowed to politic for any particular candidate. That constraint does not apply to a member of council, nor does it apply to a member of council on an issue, on a ballot issue. So a member of council is allowed to engage in whatever political activity that person um, seems to be appropriate.
Can I say something? But as a whole, this council has never been Democrat, Republican, independent. We've just been a council, a council to try and help the city. I came back here and this town was a mess. Thank God, we got a cop in there that you weren't here then. Uh, he took care of drugs and all that stuff, so the city has gone back to a nice place. But you're listening to an individual that is leading you down the wrong way. And I don't know how else to express how important it is for you to understand what number four will do. It's going to give you the mayor that you want. It's, it will be an appointed, because it's middle of the year and all that. But it's got things going for you for what you want. We, none of us, I mean, I care because it's my town. But it, that's all, thank you for sharing.
There, there's one paragraph of the ballot issue that I'd like to read that I think is important, and, and if I, it's pretty small print here, but it says, "In the event this amendment proves ineffective," talking about issue four, "in providing proper governance over the city of Nelsonville, council shall have the full authority to call for the dissolution of the charter of the city of Nelsonville to be voted on by the citizens of the city of Nelsonville. Should the citizens pass such provision by popular vote, council shall have full authority to implement any necessary transition into a statutory form of government."
So it still allows for?
Yes, valid issue four can allow that path to take place. And I, I think that's really important in this ballot issue. So.
As you were saying, I think there's value in um, in these seats being nonpartisan.
We get, we, we don't talk politics, we talk about Nelsonville, we're trying to do the best for Nelsonville. So when you started talking about politics, I thought, that's not what this council is about. I don't know about what's going to happen now, but we are not political here. We're here for the town.
Any other comments? Okay, we are still under good of the order. Uh, Ms. Joseph Sol, do you have anything to add?
Uh, well, as a, as a relatively recent transplant, is this the right form to ask? Um, since we're having this sort of educational discussion, formal discussion, why in nineteen ninety-four, the charter was um, what problem was, was we were attempting to solve by um, instituting the charter and, and what do you mean?
I presume you can't answer to that, uh. So, so I can answer, part of it is that, um, so similar to what partially what brought on issue twenty-three was um, a string of uh, turnover as a city manager. So where we found, we had issues with city managers, we've had a lot of turnover in city managers. The, the same thing led to the charter was because we had, well, we had a string of bad mayors too. So it wasn't like it was all peaches and cream under mayors. Um, it, the form of government, I, I'm, I was new to this when I first started. Um, so a form of government is in my opinion, less important than if the council works together and follows the rules, which most, you know, since I've been involved for most part, that has been the case. You've had some folks that have manipulated the rules along the way, and while those rules kind of, in my opinion, speculating just based on the the knowledge that I have over the years, it's just that it's been, it's defeated that individual, and now, well, the charter has to go. I, I don't think that it's anything to do with it being mayor, I think it's solely to remove individuals that have been sitting at this table. Um, but I can tell you that since in the recent history, because not everybody has a lot of actual knowledge of the history of Nelsonville, but in the recent years, when we've been accused of fighting, it's not been really council that's been fighting, it's been council fighting with a faction of people in the community, not, not on council themselves, we've been producing and moving forward still, but we've been fighting with individuals, we've been defending ourselves if nothing more. And you know they have, don't have really an argument when they cannot argue on policy. It's been completely an argument on character, on people that are sitting at the table. So when they're attacking us individually as in our character, it has absolutely nothing to do with the city of government, has to do with who's sitting there. I can attest that if, if if issue four does not pass, the things that I've been accused of over the last few years, uh, especially over the last few years, really hardcore, I personally would benefit greatly if, if issue four fails and issue twenty-three occurs. So, so all the things that I've been accused of will actually benefit me, so don't, it does, to me, that makes zero sense, but that's, that's the reality, though. We have not had any new projects because of the chaos that has ensued over the last several years, we have had zero new projects really instituted in the city to be done, to improve the city, most of which all occurred and started under one city manager we had a couple of years ago. And this is what we've been doing, and it's, it's all from the same, it's all stemmed from the exact same project. We have zero new projects or efforts for new projects that have occurred because all of this chaos has ensued. So I, I think regardless of who you put in over the last two years as city manager or mayor, those individuals would have failed. There was no, there's no way that they would have been able to succeed under the level of scrutiny and chaos that has been ensuing in the city. So people can say whatever they wanna say, very few people have actually know any of the truth about what's really happened, right? And that's unfortunate, and eventually, they'll probably know. But I'm just, I wish the best for everybody in the city, it's, it's gonna be a rough, rough three to five years. No, no question, regardless of what happens, it's gonna be really rough.
What it sounds like is that, um, changing the style, the, the structure of the government in the first place didn't necessarily address some of the concerns that were still fielding in twenty twenty-five. Um, about turnover, about chaos and in- employing and disagreements between the government and the public. Um, so it's more a matter of people deciding to work together and act in good faith and treat everyone else as if they are also acting in good faith. Um, rather than let's just throw it out and start over. It's, it, it's a sounds like a need for a change in attitude, rather than a change in structure. That's just.
Well, it, and, and I mean,
I hear what you're saying.
Well, I mean, but it's not necessarily a change in attitude of anyone that sits at this table, and because.
I'm saying generally.
Yes, um, I know that's perception, but everybody has perception, but very few actually have perspective. So the reality is that we've been continually moving forward, and that's the only way to go is forward, you cannot go backwards. Nineteen ninety-four is not here anymore. It's, it's not gonna return in nineteen ninety-four, it, there's only one way forward. So the, the city has changed, right? The only thing that's constant is change. We need to be able to change, adapt, and move forward. And, you know, I think folks lack, you know, the ability to get on the same page. Everybody wants to have, you know, the Rocky Boot Factory and, and the Taco Bell back and, and Blackburn, whatever, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen, right? So we have to reinvent who we are. My opinion's been, you know, that we continue to have to embrace the assets that we have in this community, right? We have Wayne National Forest in our backyard, so we've, we've got, you know, ATV trails, we have a hundred miles of, you know, mountain biking trails.
We have the Hocking Valley Scenic.
We have the Hocking Valley Scenic Railway. We still do have Rocky Boots, and, and I, I, not that I want to be bringing this down, they are a publicly traded company. There, there's absolutely nothing keeping them. They can leave at any time they want. So all I'm saying is that watch what you wish for, because if that leaves, then we're really, we're in trouble. The college has gone down in attendance over the last ten years. It's still a big financial burden on the city. It, it is what it is. So we can sit here and, and argue semantics. I'm more of, let's compromise. So we, my first four years, the four-year first term that I served, I was getting ready to complete my first term, I was getting, I decided I was gonna run again. I was going to go for another four years. I was, I'm not a patient person. It was excruciating from the very first day that I became a council member to the end of my term. It took us four years to develop, to, to agree that, yes, we need a new water treatment plant, to bid it out, to get the engineering done, to have it shovel-ready, to apply for the funds, to bid it, to get approved, to bid it out, to construct it, and get it online. It took four years to do that. And a council member at that time, you know, when I was so proud and saying during the Good of the Order how I was ecstatic about that accomplishment. And you know what he said? He said, huh, we've been fighting over that for twenty-five years. Well, to me, if you knew from that point, twenty-five years before that, that you needed a new water treatment plant, that's not a problem about deciding that you need to get it done. It's not, it's the ability to work with people to get it done. Okay, so they fought and fought for thirty years, and then what happened? The state said, guess what? We're putting the bypass here whether you like it or not, because they fought, instead of working with the state on actually making it go through. So it's not been, you know, in my experience, the members that I've served with on council so much as, you know, certain factions within the city. And, but I'm, I'm, I'm proud to serve what I have. I'm done after this. That's it. Sorry, Mr. Courtney, there's no way I'm sticking around for another month. I've been called everything that you can imagine. I've been personally attacked, my, my family has been drugged through the mud personally. And why would I want to stick around for another thirty days? Why? And you're lucky that I'm sticking around this long. It, it's, it's to the point where it's no longer about agreeing to disagree, it's about political attacks about your character and who you are. There are people saying things online about me that have never said a word to me in this community. They don't know who I am, first and foremost. They know nothing about me, never even asked to get to know me. So I wish you all the best of luck. Happy Easter. That's, you know, my Good of the Order up. I'm off my soapbox first, if I must.
Yeah, I, I, comes as no surprise to me based on what you have gone through that we have a shortage of candidates running for office.
Either way goes, you don't have enough people to play on the field, so. Okay.
Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Lawson?
I'll take my two piece right now.
Mr. Peck, I said mine. Okay. I have a couple of things I want to add a little bit to what Mr. Taylor said. I think the biggest issue facing us here in a few years is the twenty thirty census. And we barely made it in twenty twenty to retain our status as a city. It's gonna be very difficult to achieve that in twenty thirty. And if we think we have problems now, I, I hope that we can avoid that. One other thing, it is now mowing season. I bring this up every year. Please, when you mow your grass, do not blow it out in the street. And with that, I'm done with my Good of the Order. I believe we have we need an executive session.
I'm so sorry. Could I ask one more thing?
Yes.
It's about beautification initiative. I saw that that happened around this time last year. I haven't seen much about it happening this year. What what is the, what's the plan for that?
Uh, I don't know about a comprehensive plan, but Rocky is having a beautification day at the Commons Park.
Oh, it's hosted by Rocky, okay.
Yeah, they're going to be, some of their staff will do over there, some of our staff will be there. I can't remember the date. I think it might be the twenty-second, but I'll put my map. I can send you an email with it. But they're gonna be over there to help clean up, put some new mulch down, put playground equipment. Just, this one is asking.
The gentleman that used to plant all the flowers on the square, he's now on the way with us.
I've got a question about that for the voters, so I'll let them know.
Didn't the Chamber of Commerce take, do something out also?
I'm not sure what they did.
It's been individuals that's been doing this. I mean, I was part of it last year.
Okay, you do have to begin this year.
Love you too.
Okay, so I make a motion to go into executive session to consider the purchase of property for public purpose, CRC one twenty-one point two-two G two, and also a conference with the city attorney to discuss disputes subject to pending or imminent court action, CRC one twenty-one point two-two G three. I'd like to invite in Mr. Rogue, Chief Oliver, and possibly towards the end, Mr. Holmes. So I have a motion on the floor. Clerk call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Sorry.
Oh, there it is. Everybody said sign yes.
Oh, everybody does.
Yeah. We're sitting. You should have said yes on that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have to, how we actually voted during the meeting, now we have to sign it. And did we all vote yes on it?
Yeah, this was the, the resolution to have the city auditor.
Or the county auditor. Yeah, so we have to, you actually have to put what you, how you voted during the meeting. Thank you.
It's the only one, just the resolution.
Yeah, that's not actually a sign.
Any chance I can borrow your pens, or anything?
I make a motion to return from executive session at eleven twenty-five. Is that good?
Just, just so that the meeting minutes reflect this, there, there needs to be put on the record that with respect to the discussion that council had for the purchase of property was all done in conformity with the order given. So I'll just, that will, that needs to be reflected by the court of minutes.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just stating this for the record.
Okay, all right. So
So we need a temporary clerk. Okay. This is our reason for the evening, so.
Do we make a motion to do that? Okay, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Taylor the temporary clerk for the rest of this meeting.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yep, yes.
Mr. Taylor, yes, okay. And I apologize, Mr. President, but you had a motion and a second on the floor for coming out of executive session.
Correct.
Eleven twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Yes. Mr. Lawson?
Okay. All right, with that, I move that council and strike the city attorney to take legal action against Mr. Greg Smith. If Mr. Smith doesn't comply with the city's reasonable and lawful request, he withdraws his frivolous and baseless claims against the city by the deadline given by the city attorney. Is that good?
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Peck?
Yes.
All right. Mr. President, I would motion that the city attorney directed, that the council direct city attorney to draft a contract with Mr. Brett Holmes for interim city manager till the end of the year, intended upon bonding.
Second.
Okay.
Good. Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rogue, Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I believe that concludes our business. So with that, motion to adjourn.
Second. Um, oh, uh,
Whatever you have to. Just to allow those ones.
Motion to adjourn. Or just without objection, I do not.
Do you have it, do you have something to say on the motion to adjourn?
I was wondering, will there, there will be committee meetings between now and next?
Yes, typically, the president and council assigns the committees. Previously, I have worked with the vice president, Ms. Sonic, do those, do those committee assignments. So we'll reach out and we'll send out an email on the committee assignments here shortly.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. Yeah, okay, no more discussion. All right, on roll call then. Mr. Taylor, yes?
Yes.
Lawson? Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Are you gonna slide that under?